We're always gonna have. And I just got a great problem on Third Street with a somebody who went to Italy and rented her house to somebody. And they wouldn't schedule an inspection. And I had to do some things that really weren't my job, but I did them. As far as I'm concerned, they were Housing Inspector's responsibilities and not mine. And so I found out finally that from Italy, this lady hired an attorney and took the guy to eviction court. I went by there last night and there was six or seven people there. And New York was full of everything for me in the house.
From New York, all of everything what?
From me in the house.
Coming out.
Yes, sir. So I stopped and talked to the guy. I was met with an extremely hostile environment, okay? Extremely hostile. And a wise guy. And telling me all kinds of crap. And I thought, oh.
Don't even turn there.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna hear any of that. I want the bottom line. That's what I'm here for. So he said he got evicted and he was supposed to be out and cleaned up by last night and that's up to the Sheriff's Department. I can tell you that never happened. Not, you know, not by, not by last night. And I hope this girl don't think she's gonna have much of a house left inside when she gets back. Because it's trash.
Where is this?
On Third Avenue, 197 Third Avenue.
First house on the left.
He cut all kinds of trees down around the property. And now right around the corner.
Wayne, question on that one.
Certainly.
Is the house secure at this time or do we have a?
Well, I, I, I really, I, I really don't know that. Last night he was still there.
Okay.
And I haven't been there. I haven't been there tonight.
Okay.
See, our problem is this. And it's a good point you brought up. Our, our problem is this. I can order somebody, and I do, order people to board secure vacant houses. Okay? However, if they don't do it, I, and I can also take them to court if they show up. But, you know, we have no funding here. A lot of cities, if it goes through the process and it's not done, they have it done and they put a lien on the, on the property. Okay? Same way with some stuff cleaning up. But in the smaller cities, we don't have the funding that I'm aware of to, to do anything like that.
Point of issue, Wayne. We have a company, I think they're called Community something. And they take their.
I'm glad you asked me.
Well, let me just finish. I even thought that we had an ordinance that's on the books that indicates that the properties that are in foreclosure have to be maintained. And I think that was the first year that I came back on. And we also, I thought within that ordinance, we have the ability to contact that company in which if there's a problem, they will go over there and take care of it. And if they don't, then we'll take care of it. And then yes, there will be a lien.
Well, everything you said was correct about I'm not aware of the lien. But I'm glad that you brought Community Champions up. Because I'm not at all happy with their performance. I'm informing them of stuff that they should be informing me about. Okay? And I'm not happy at all with their performance. I was just gonna bring up a fact that right around the corner from 197 is 198 Tuttahoe Road.
Principality.
And it was Jeffrey Principati?
Principality.
Principality.
Principality, okay. And that's a foreclosure. So after much ado and contacting people, I got the house ported and secured. However, the entire backyard and everything is trashed. I've been in contact with Community Champions at least four times. And been in contact with the foreclosure bank, which I'm not supposed to do. Community Champions is supposed to do that. And nobody has done nothing back down there to the backyard. I was there last evening, right before I went to Third Street. So I'm not real happy with Community Champions and I worked with them as well in Corbin City and I'm not thrilled to death with the mayor either.
Question.
Yes, sir.
What is the contract that we have with them? If in fact we even have a contract with them?
Well, the contract is, is they collect a $300 fee. They send the city $100. The Atlantic County Improvement Authority keeps $100. And they keep $100. Unless they've raised their fee, but I don't know that they have, so I'm not gonna.
But is there a contract with Estelmaner or is it?
Well, we're part, we're part of a group. It was a.
It's for the whole county, right?
It was an entire Atlantic County joining this Community Champions. And we joined in as well as Corbin City as a part of this group. And when they first got going, they were doing a pretty good job. But now I'm calling them to tell them the house is foreclosed on. And they're supposed to be jacking on all that money. And I send them messages about property maintenance needing to be done. And I don't get follow-ups. And I'm trying to contact the banks myself to get it done. And that's one of the reasons that I'm not extremely happy with their performance.
So in the short of this then, Wayne, is there a secondary company? Do you know of any other companies?
No, no, sir, I don't.
Because if we have the ability to either A.
Well, let.
Break or B, have a secondary so that if you're not available and you don't take care of it within a reasonable timeframe, that we can call second.
Well, I can tell you what. I can tell you, I can give you an option, but it's not the type of option that you asked me about. But it entails a little bit of time. In Millville, we charge a $600 foreclosure fee.
To the bank?
To the bank. And we do all the contacting the, of the banks and stuff ourselves. And we keep the entire $600. Of course, you have to have somebody to contact the banks and stuff. Down here, it isn't a big, big deal because we don't have that many foreclosures. And my, my suggestion would be only a suggestion, I'm bringing up other ways. Is that you have some kind of a fund where when you give them a certain amount of time, you take them to court, you also have a crew or whomever you hire and there's a lot of people available, boarded, secure, clean the yard up, whatever its needs. You put a $500 administrative fee on top of whatever you spend. And the attorney that you hire puts a lien on the property. That way there, the bank or anyone else can't sell the property until that lien's satisfied. Okay?
Wayne, that's a great idea. That would have to be done by ordinance.
Well, I understand.
We would have to.
I was only giving you another option. Your question was, do I know of any other companies that operate like Community Champions? And my answer is, I'm not aware of any other ones.
Let me ask you this, Wayne. When this $600, could we get in over our head, like it would end up costing us more? You know, between boarding off the windows?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. The $600 is just their registration fee. If they don't perform, then let's say, we'll, we'll make a, we'll just make a scenario. We got this house, you know, they're not performing. So we haven't boarded, secured, we have the yard clean, the city.
Right.
And we spend $700 doing that. Now, we get an attorney. We put a $500 administrative fee, just a suggestion, on top of it. And the attorney puts a lien on the property for $1,200. So that's to get that money back. However, and this is the way a lot of cities do this. However, you have to keep in mind that if the property does not get sold for a couple of years or three years, you're not getting that $1,200 until the property gets sold and it's time for settlement.
And then we have legal fees in the meantime with it.
Well, no. You, you're gonna pay your attorney.
Right.
I don't know what you're gonna pay your attorney, but you're gonna put a $500 administration fee for an attorney, put the lien on, on top of the $700. Then, when it, when there's a title search to sell the house, they automatically have to satisfy that lien. And you get your $1,200 sent to you. But you're, you're not.
It's pretty much no different than it's done in many cities with sidewalks and and other improvements and all like that. So that's not anything new or unique.
Yeah. If you invest, well, really, if you invest the $700 and whatever your attorney charges you. And you're, you're not gonna get that money back until the house is sold and settlement is made. So and that could go, you know, it could go two, three years. I I have no way of knowing. That's just an option to what we're doing now. I just brought it up because in many cities it's done that way.
That would have to start a council with an ordinance. Am I correct?
You are correct, but the starting point is not necessarily so. I actually think there would be this board, it would be the recommendations to the council. We need to have the help of the zoning officer.
The board, the board.
We need to have the help of the zoning board itself, you know, to proceed.
You, well, I can, I can give you an ordinance. Okay? And then it would be up, the way the procedure works is just like the mayor brought it up. The board studies the, the ordinance if they wish to make it and they recommend it to the commission. And usually when the board recommends something to the commission, then they pass it.
And in the event that the board doesn't make a recommendation or can't make a decision, then the council will then pick up the slack and we'll take the lead.
Oh, yeah, that, that. But you're right. But.
Wayne, here's another issue that you're talking about, quite honestly, that I wanna get out in the open. And that is I have no certainty whatsoever about the previous issue that you said about someone who's renting. Do we have an ordinance that pertains to if someone is renting and, you know, for the inspection and all?
Okay.
What's the procedure on that?
Is under your housing.
I read through your report here. It's like I have a lot of questions that were written through my mouth.
That your report is under the section in your code book for your housing inspector. Okay? You have a housing inspector. Okay? So when when someone rents a house out, if we find out, they are supposed to register for a CO inspection for a rental. It's the same thing for the sale of a house. Okay? Uh, we had a problem at this particular house. And I spoke with the housing inspector and he seemed to think it's my job to enforce this. It isn't my job to enforce it. It's all under the section for the housing inspector. But since, since it wasn't gonna get done, I stepped forward and sent the violation notices and did the research and got a hold of the this girl's parents and all that. Because if I didn't, it wasn't gonna happen. Okay?
Isn't there also a job description in each and every single position here, such as yours?
Yeah, well, it's right in it.
So that should kinda.
All you have to do is read the housing inspection section in the ordinance and it's quite clear who's supposed to enforce it and who's supposed to do it. Okay? So I didn't mind stepping up because it had to be done. But, you know, it really wasn't my responsibility. But the other individual, and, and I, and I think the guy's a great guy. I don't wanna. But it's his responsibility and why he wasn't willing to do it, I, I have no idea.
Would it be a good suggestion perhaps just so that we can clear the matter up as to whose position it is? Maybe we would have a closed session pertaining to a personal matter with.
But that's what you wish to do. I mean, it's quite clear in the ordinance. I just think that you could, you could clearly just tell the guy that this is what you gotta do.
And we'll talk to him firsthand and I'll ask.
And I'll be, and I'd be more than happy to assist him with any help he needs. I just don't want to get the thought and the thing in place that it's my job to do because it really isn't. But I'll help him, any kind of help he needs. Advice or anything, if he needs it. I'll be more than happy to help him all I can.
Wayne, you're generally here on Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
So circling back to our issues.
Yes.
Is there, is there, you, you've got the situation somewhat under control. We, it sounds like you guys have some work to do with housing in terms of getting the properties secure and all like that. Do we have other issues we need to discuss on the?
Well, I mean, I'm just not happy with the foreclosures and things of that nature. I'm not happy the way Community Champions is handling it. I, I think that I'm doing a lot of work that they're supposed to do. And I interface with them a lot, but you know, there's, they're a big outfit. You send them an email or you call there and they say, oh yeah, we'll check this, we'll call you back. That kind of stuff, you know? Push one if you want this and 17 if you want that. And you all know the.
Crazy, you're not, I hate that.
Yeah, you all know the routine. You've been through it one place or another. Well, this is, this is no difference. And I'm not happy with their performance. And I'm not gonna make any bones about the fact that I'm not happy with.
Since Community is, the relationship is with the, the county association that our council, I guess, is part of, can you take that as an action item back to council and see what we can do to light a fire under?
Yeah, I don't think we have.
Some legal issues there and go along with that.
Yeah, I don't think we have.
And I don't know, but I'm just saying.
I don't think we have any obligation to stay with.
I don't think so.
Yeah, this is not a sounding issue, so.
I don't think we have any obligation to have to stay with them. We can tell them we're dropping out.
Yeah.
But that's up to you folks. Before we drop out, let's, let's have another thing in mind.
Right.
That we're gon', we're gonna do. You know, let's put something in place or get ready to put something in place that's gonna move forward before we let the other one go. That would be my suggestion.
All right.
And it's a good one.
Yeah.
Hey Wayne, on a happy note, did you see the house on First Avenue? The one that, all the stuff, it used to be outside?
Well, that's the same guy that was renting a house on Third Street, Third.
But did you see what happened to that house?
Yes, I've been there and talked to them people. They bought it out of foreclosure and they're rehabbing it.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Move from your street to my street.
But that's the same, that's the same guy that lived in that house that got foreclosed on, that rented that house on Third Avenue that I've been talking.
Oh, my goodness.
Henry Gosling.
The same guy?
Grunberg, whatever. It's the same guy.
So, so Wayne, you need to be on the lookout for this guy since he's getting kicked out of that house, moving to another house, like maybe, let's see, that was First, Third, Fifth.
I'm really hoping. I'm really hoping that he used to win the championship or something, but I don't know.
Come in soon. Wayne, while we are, while we are in your zoning office's report, I wanted to bring something to your attention.
Whatever.
You and I had a conversation a while back on particular residents and I told you something to the effect that I was absolutely appalled, devastated and totally shocked.
Yes, you were.
At what I saw on the back of the property over there. And the reason why I'm bringing this up now is spring is around the corner and there are quite a number of containers and tires. And if it starts getting into a rainy season and they collect odor and we start breeding mosquitoes, I mean, this is public.
Well, it's public in essence. If there's tires forward, we'll contact the board to help. And the only thing I know how to do with this, I have one, two, three, four, five properties that I'm having problems with. Couple people were sick. That particular guy happens to be one of them. Okay? But I think that I just write all, summonses to all of them and let the judge sort it out. The problem with that, there isn't a problem. So we can come here and we can get a good fine and all that. However, that doesn't necessarily bring compliance. Okay? And a, and a perfect example, you're, it's a catch 22. A perfect example is and I was on that property Wednesday night, by the way. A perfect example is Fred Thorpe. Fred Thorpe spent $10,000 down there to form fines and everything. The property still isn't compliant.
He's got $10,000 that he's paid to this county?
Between, no. Between the DEP, okay? Superior Court and here, he spent 10 grand.
Plus he has a lawyer?
Yeah.
Who's his lawyer by, by?
Oh, some idiot. I forget his name. But he gets thrown out of every law firm he works for in Cohen County, they fire him. Well, he taught Fred into taking this, when, when, when the judge here fined him, he taught Fred into taking it to Superior Court. And he, Fred paid him almost $5,000. And I had Fred in my office who's Fred's not a fan of mine, I can assure you. We did stop him from doing business there for the most part. And I told him, Fred, I said, I really don't wanna tell you what to do. It's none of my business. But I said, you ain't got a snowball chance in hell of going to Superior Court and getting that air return. Oh, yeah, that's a terrible, he went to Superior Court and lost. So then he had to come back here and pay the fine. The stormwater portion of the DEP already had fined him three or $4,000. And he went up there and had a meeting with them. And of course, I'm not privy to that. I know what the outcome was, but he had to pay a fine. So, you know, I, what rats my brain is trying to get compliance on these properties, get compliance on the properties and although they deserve a lot of fines, it just doesn't always get compliance on the property. So it's not a, it's not a real easy thing to do. And I'm gonna bring something else up since you did. Okay? When you see this report with, with the same people on it. Okay? That's in this, every town I work in. Okay? The same people are usually not tidy. The same people will clean up just enough to get out of it. And then six weeks later, it looks just as bad again. Okay? So that's a very, that's a very common thing. And I'm, I'm happy I made I'm happy as I made as much progress with Fred Thorpe as I have. Because that went on for 40 years. I'd love to see what's buried on that property. But I don't have the money to bore, to bore the property because I hear he, he's a barker. He likes to bury shit from what I hear.
Is that maybe a visit to the HDSRF following that?
Yeah, well, I had, look, I had the DEP down there. I had the county board to help. I had the state fire marshal. I had myself. I had the state cops there. All at the same time.
What about the ECO up there?
Yeah.
They, they were there.
Yeah, and then he, then the DEP made him put an application in for a stormwater permit with a plan. And that's what cost him four grand and then they turned him down. Okay?
Wayne, in all due respect unto this board here, I personally believe in my heart, we have got to have a second look at our current ordinance that we have. It needs to be updated. We need to throw some teeth into it because right now it almost seems like it's somewhat of a toothless tiger. Or if it's not toothless, it's got to chew teeth into it.
Well, I got another thing I can bring up about that. So I'm, I'm very happy that you're bringing this stuff up. I really am.
Please do, because I'd rather hear it.
They contracted with General ECODE to rewrite the ordinance. And we had one meeting about it. And they decided that well, you know, you know more about it than anybody. And so you should really review everything and talk to General ECODE. Okay? So, and here's, here's what I did. I looked it over some. I'm gonna be honest with you. There's probably 70, 80 hours of work there for me to review that and really make it the way it should be.
The whole code book or just a couple of different?
The whole code book. They, General ECODE was doing over the whole code book.
I, I hear what you're saying, but we're getting away from what I said, which is our current ordinance, as in just the one ordinance or maybe two. Needs to have a few more teeth thrown into its appropriate place.
Well, I, I can understand.
Isn't it like we have some slippage here, Wayne? There's gotta be something that you can grab.
Well, you know, it, it, we helped the property maintenance code, which they put in, which really helps. But the system really holds you down a lot. And the courts are geared, you know what the courts are geared for in the state of New Jersey? Oh, you got a traffic ticket. And, okay, you were going 65 into 50. And, oh, but if you don't want any points, we'll charge you an extra $400 fee. Okay? And that way there, we'll collect it, the state gets most of it and you're out the door. They're not geared for property maintenance. Property maintenance is a pain in the ass to them as far as they're concerned. Okay? And that's every, I work in five different courts at times. And that's every one I work in. And getting this stuff done and, and I know how it seems, but it just isn't as easy as you think. It's like the property on Route 50. I give them some and just a couple of them, take them to court. So I get $800 worth of fines. I'm, I'm throwing it big enough.
The Route 50 property has ended one with the tires.
Yes. I get $800 worth of fines. And, and, but the property doesn't become compliant. So now once I've prosecuted him on a certain thing, if he pleads guilty or he gets found guilty, I can't prosecute him on that again.
However, if we have in our ordinance that you have 30 days or 60 days to get your property cleaned up. And if you don't get it cleaned up within that time period, the city will then go out and get a contractor to clean up the property.
Oh, that's fine. That'd be a great thing.
Cause there are some towns that have that.
Oh, I just got them telling you about that. But down here, okay? Are funds gonna be available for me to do something like that? Okay, that's, you, you do just what you said.
You're not gonna clean it up, Wayne. You're just simply gonna
But are, but. But are, but we gotta hire somebody. If I say you're, we're gonna hire somebody now after this amount of time to clean that property up. So now we go clean it up, we put a $500 administrative fee on it, we put a lien on the property, okay? So there's a period of time where the city's not gonna take in any money for that. Do we have the funds available to do that?